This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the September 20th, 2023 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. At this time, I would ask you to all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce we do have one Commissioner absent this evening. Commissioner Brad Osborne is not present this evening. Otherwise, we have a full board. Moving on to announcements, I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I would like to ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. Chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Courtesy of the Floor. This is opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present who'd like to address? Sir, if you'd come to the microphone, please? Need you to turn the little green button on and give us your name and address, please.
John Chea, 2911 Huckleberry Road, Allentown. I'd just like to ask that Chief Dorni look into speeding on Huckleberry Road east of Cedar Crest Boulevard. We live right at the bottom of that first hill and cars seem to be flying down the road in increasing numbers. Just pulling out of my driveway sometimes is a bit of a challenge, but sometimes there are people walking on the road and none of them are young folks anymore. So the other thing is that going west on Huckleberry Road, it's 25 miles an hour, and going east, it's 35. And I stopped a young person a couple of years ago and said, hey, do you know what the speed limit is? He says, oh, it's 45. So maybe what we need to do is post it at 25. And I invite any time a police officer wants to sit in my driveway and watch what happens. They're certainly welcome to do that. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to approach the board? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Scott Ivey. I live at 3415 Trigg Boulevard. I wanted to know if there is an update on the speed bumps?
I'll ask our township manager to address that for you.
Yes. When we sent out letters regarding the placement of the speed humps, several residents had expressed concerns with stormwater and Public Works crews had actually observed in two separate instances where there was significant rainfall, where there were potential impacts, including ponding and water along the roadways. What we recommended was to purchase two temporary speed humps that would be in the same configuration as a permanent speed hump. We are in the process of ordering those. It's going through our requisition process and they will be deployed later this fall.
Do you know when that might happen?
It's all the timing of when we can receive them from the vendor. Their material, you know, they're not last fall. We can't make them. They're temporary. So they're rubberized. So I would hope within the next month.
I understand. But I live there and there's been a problem with that water for years and years. So I don't...
Right. So we want to observe the impacts with the temporary speed humps so that we're not creating a permanent problem or exasperating the existing stormwater problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening? Is there anyone online?
There's a comment online.
Of course.
Marie, you can unmute yourself and make your comment now.
Yes, hi. This is Marie North, 3025 Victoria Lane, Allentown. And I'm just here to provide some information for the Board of Commissioners and the staff and residents of South Whitehall Township. As the number of you know, my husband and I live on a small stewardship forest in South Whitehall Township. And we will be participating in a program that's offered throughout the state of Pennsylvania called a Walk in Penns Woods. And that's going to be held on October 1. And we will be doing that from 1 until 4 o'clock at our property. It will be interactive narrative and obviously a walk. We are the only forested property at this point in Lehigh County that is offering a walk, but that may change. And if you go to the website, walkinpennswoods.org, you will find many walks throughout the state in all of the various counties. So they look incredible. They look like a lot of fun. So if you choose to go to another one, I would completely understand. But if you want to find out what we're doing here in our little forest in South Whitehall Township, I encourage you to come on out and see what we're about. You can find us again on walkinpennswoods.org. And if you scroll down, you will look at where are the walks being held, I believe is how it's noted. And that's where all of them will be listed. And we are listed under Lehigh County. So you will see the times that we will be offering our walks. You don't have to be there for the whole time, 1 to 4. You can choose the time that's convenient for you if you do choose to come out.
Very good, Marie. Thank you for sharing that information with the board and the public.
Sure.
Is there anyone else with a comment at this time?
No other comments online.
Very good. Hearing and seeing none, I will move on in our agenda to presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation from Herbine &amp; Company of our 2022 Audit Presentation and Approval of Audited Financial Statements for Fiscal Year 2022. And I invite Megan Thompson from Herbine &amp; Company to join us.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Commissioners, you have a packet in front of you that has both financial statements, some letters, and on top is a landscape document which summarizes everything. That's what I'm going to walk through tonight. Yep, we have it up on the screen, too. So if we start on page 2, we're just going to go through a brief introduction, review those audit reports that you have, talk about a new accounting standard that impacted your 2022 financials. We'll go over some brief financial highlights and some trends for the financials of the township. And then I'll just summarize those communication letters that we provide as well. On the next slide, it's just a reminder that we do audit under generally accepted auditing standards. And this is a financial statement audit. So our responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance on the numbers in those financials and provide an opinion on those. The financial statements do contain what we call a blended component unit. So the township has an authority, South Whitehall Township Authority, which operates water and sewer, and that is blended into the township statements, meaning the township financial statements include that activity as well. There's also separate standalone statements for the authority just until that dissolution is complete. And then also a reminder that the township contracts with an actuary to provide the actuarial estimates that roll into these financials. Page 5 just goes over our audit opinion letters. So both financial statements have an unmodified opinion this year, which is a clean audit opinion from us. In the past, we've talked a little bit about significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, which were recommendations we had. I'm happy to report we also have none of those this year. Your staff has worked very, very hard to take the recommendations that we've provided the past several years and put them into practice. So a very clean audit opinion this year all around. So good work to your team. As I mentioned at the beginning, we did have a new accounting standard that impacted your 2022 financials. It has to do with how leases are reported. Very minimal impact for the township. The township does lease copiers. So in the past, you just expensed the copier payments as they were made. This new standard says, well, since you have a multi-year commitment to pay that lease, it actually gets shown as a liability on your financials. Again, small dollars at this point for you guys. I just want to point it out because if you're comparing last year's statements to this year's, you are going to see a new line for lease obligation. We look at some of the financial highlights from 2022. This slide shows your general fund activity. The first column of numbers shows what was budgeted for 2022. The middle column shows what actually happened, and then our variance from budget. So if we look all the way at the bottom, the dark blue line of the middle column, the surplus for the general fund for 2022 was 2.3 million. Kind of a combination of revenues being over budget and expenses being under budget, leading to that surplus. The top orange line here shows the revenues in the general fund. Revenues were about $4 million over budget in 2022, a majority of that relating to taxes. It was a strong year for the economy. So your earned income taxes were almost $1 million over budget. Your transfer taxes were $400,000 over budget. And with everything kind of rebounding since COVID, your admission and amusement tax was also significantly over budget. And we'll look on the next slide at some trends to show kind of how much higher than usual those were in 2022. Oh, sorry. Can we go back one more? Go back to that slide. The middle orange line here shows your total expenditures. Expenditures were 1.5 million under budget in the general fund. Cost-saving measures taken by your management team, you know, opting to do things in-house as opposed to contracting it out in order to save money. We also had a few open positions. If you think back to 2021, that's when you had some turnover in the different management positions. So there was some time when you had open positions. Now we'll go to the next slide. And this next slide shows a history of your tax revenue over the past five years. The dark blue bar there is your 2022 activity. So it just shows, you know, how strong earned income tax was, how strong business privilege tax collection was. And that was an initiative that your management team took on to really work on collections there. And you can see the results of that. And then your admission tax rebounding as well. So while over budget, a lot of that's caused by it just being so much higher than historical trends. The next slide is a graph of the past three years of expenditures and the different categories of services provided. Overall, pretty comparable. You're going to see an increase in fire from the past, and that's just because the general fund is now paying the salaries related to fire, whereas in the past, that was paid out of your fire tax fund. The next slide shows your general fund fund balance. So at the end of 2022, you had about 9.5 million in unassigned fund balance in your general fund. That includes your internal general fund and your internal fiscal stability fund. So when we look at your fund balance as a gauge of where you should be, we usually recommend that that unassigned fund balance is around 20% of next year's budgeted expenditures. You can see your general fund is right near that. But when we add your fiscal stability fund in, you're significantly above that recommended minimum. So a healthy fund balance for the township. The next slide summarizes the balances and activity in what we call your special revenue funds. These are funds that track money that comes in that is restricted for a specific purpose. So for the township, that is your tax, fire tax money that's assessed that must be spent on fire protection services, your state aid that comes in that must be spent on highways and streets, and then your open space contributions that need to be spent on culture and rec. Ending fund balance in these funds are restricted then for those purposes. The next slide shows your capital projects fund balances and activity for 2022. At the end of the year, the township had about $650,000 in capital fund balance. Of that, $292,000 is restricted because that's unspent debt proceeds from your 2021 issuance that has to be spent on capital projects. And the remaining was just assigned because it's been transferred over to capital projects. Page 13 then shows a summary of what we call your proprietary funds. These are your water, sewer, and refuse funds where you charge a fee to provide the service. The orange line shows either the surplus or deficit in those funds for 2022. And then the dark blue line at the bottom shows your ending net position. The net position is broken into two categories. The top one says net investment in capital assets. That's basically the value of the capital assets. It's not spendable reserves. If you're looking at what's spendable, you look at the unrestricted line, which is the second line there. Lastly, I just want to touch on the pension funds that are included in the statement. The township has five different pension funds. Only the defined benefit plans are included in your financial statement under accounting standards. So that would be your police, your public works, and your office personnel plans. When we look at the ending balances, if we go to page 15 here, the top graph shows the total pension liability. So what's owed for future benefits in those plans? You'll see relatively consistent over the past five years. The chart on the bottom shows the net pension liability, which takes that total pension liability and subtracts off the investments that are held in trust to pay the future benefits. You're going to see a big increase in the net pension liability in 2022, and that's just a result of market conditions. Those pension funds hold investments. So when the market has a not-so-great year, the investment value drops, which pushes your net pension liability higher. The next chart demonstrates this, too. This is the funded status of your plans. And you're going to see we took a dip in 2022. Across all of our municipalities that we audit, we saw about a 15% to 20% loss on investments during 2022. The township was about 16% out here. So nothing out of line from what we've seen with our other municipal pension plans that we audit. The full financial statements you have and will be available. I recommend, you know, anyone take a look. There's a lot of information there. They're very long, new this year in the township statement. Your management team did write what's called a Management's Discussion and Analysis. It's at the very front of the township's statements. It's something new that they've done this year that really summarizes the financial results and some future factors to consider when reading the statement. So that's definitely a great place to start when you look at the full financial statements. And lastly, you have two letters from us. I mentioned at the beginning, this is a financial statement audit. We don't look at internal controls as part of our audit procedures. But as we talk through processes that your team has in place, any chance for us to suggest improvements, that letter is our chance. You're used to seeing multiple pages. This year, it's a very short letter with just a few best practice recommendations, nothing major at all. Your team has done a really great job. And lastly, on page 18, the second letter that you have from us is our communication letter. It just tells you we didn't have any disagreements with management or any difficulties performing the audit. Talks a little bit about that new standard that was implemented, but nothing else that we need to report to you tonight. The last few pages are just some information about our firm and our contact information. Should you have any questions? Are there any questions for me right now?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. We did have a Business and Finance meeting earlier this month where the Herbine did present it, Jacob, myself, Trish and her department. I just want to congratulate your work that you did and also our finance department did a phenomenal job. And Trish, and make sure all the people in your department know how we feel. You guys, under the circumstances with everything going on, you guys did a phenomenal job. And I think the report shows that. And as a Commissioner, I could be more proud of what's been done this year. Thank you.
I have a couple of additional comments to build on what Commissioner Kennedy said. First, if you look at the 30,000-foot level, the progress that the township has made is pretty remarkable. When you look at, you know, 13, 14 years ago, there was embezzlement issue, followed by 10 years of no audits being done in a timely manner, followed by audits starting to be done in 2021 for 2016, 2020, and then including 21, but where those audits had a number of deficiencies and a wide range of deficiencies to now getting to the point where not only was the audit done on time, but it was also found that there were no deficiencies. So it's really nice to see a tremendous amount of progress. And second, a more specific comment. I'd just like to thank our finance department staff, our township management team. When you look at these numbers, obviously, 2022 is a complicated year, not knowing where we would be coming off of COVID, but to have actual revenues exceed budgeted revenues, to have actual expenses come in under budget as expenses, to show that we have a strong fund balance that exceeds the policy that the board adopted. So both the macro and micro level, it really is a success story. So I just want to thank the entire township staff for all the work that they put into this. And of course, to you, Megan, and Chris, and everybody else at Herbine, thank you for all that you do for us and your presentation. I joked with Commissioner Kennedy after the Finance Committee meeting that I looked through your presentation and I thought you missed some slides because I didn't see any findings, detailed findings, detailed deficiencies. Turns out, wasn't there because there were none. So thanks again, and we look forward to continuing to work with you in the future.
Thank you. Likewise.
I have a quick comment, too. Thank you for being on this journey with us. You saw where we were. You saw where we are now. What a tremendous difference. So thank you, and I really appreciate that continuity. And again, well said, Commissioner Roth. I couldn't thank the staff anymore. It's phenomenal where we've been and where we are now. Thank you so very much.
Gosh, it's hard to follow all of the compliments and comments. I agree with everything that's been said, so I won't be repetitive. Megan, thank you to you and your team for sticking with us through some rocky roads several years ago to get to this place today. I specifically want to thank the finance team. I know that you spearheaded most of this in conjunction with management, of course, but working together to bring the township to such a strong financial place audit-wise is just phenomenal. But more importantly, I want to thank all staff for operating within the parameters of the budget that was presented by management last year. Each and every day when you make decisions for what we're buying and where and how, staying within the parameters, keeping things in line, staying on pace with the targets and the goals that have been identified by management really is what makes all of this work together. So I want to give my compliments to all of our staff for working for the good of our community to deliver services in top-notch manner, but with fiscal responsibility always in focus as well. So many thanks to all.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Megan. But this time, before we proceed with a motion to approve, I would open it up to the floor. If there are any comments from anyone here this evening on the audits before we take a vote. Is there anyone online? Chris, who might have any comments?
No comments online.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2022.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4 to 0. Again, congratulations. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, we have our September 6, 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes. They've been distributed to the board in advance. Are there any comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, ordinances. We have Direction and Discussion of Environmental Related Ordnances, the Environmental Advisory Council, Air Pollution Board, and Green Advisory Council. Now I'll call on our long-range planner, Chris Stroller, to present this agenda item.
Thank you. If the board recalls in maybe April, after the comprehensive plan was adopted, the board provided direction for staff to look at, for lack of a better word, cleaning up some of our boards and committees for a more consistent basis. Staff has been working on that. Tonight, we're presenting one of the first boards that we are looking to clean up and have more consistent in. So as you can see in the packet, and as Commissioner Kelly mentioned, there are currently three boards that have very similar missions. The Township Environmental Advisory Council, which was established by ordinance in 1974. Shortly after that, the Township Air Pollution Board in 1976. And then the Township Green Advisory Council, established by resolution in 2019. Staff has been reviewing the mission and the goals of these commissions, and we are recommending to, as part of cleaning up the ordinance, to have a revised Environmental Advisory Council ordinance that would put all of this into one board, essentially getting rid of some of the excess boards that either haven't met in, I'll be honest, decades, and just provide clear direction to the volunteers who are involved in those boards. So you have in front of you the proposed changes to the revised Environmental Advisory Council. The ordinance as written is written in the format that we are proposing for the subsequent boards that we will be presenting to follow. And we are looking for a motion to send this revised Environmental Advisory Council ordinance to legal for review. I should mention that as this moves forward, we will also look at removing the, I'll say, the nonessential ordinances that are in there existing from the start of these boards. So moving forward, everything would fall under the newly revised Environmental Advisory Council ordinance.
Excellent, Chris. Thank you for that presentation, and thank you for bringing this to the board for consideration. Again, tackling another implementation of the comprehensive plan. So thank you for keeping that in the forefront. I'll open it up if there are any comments or questions from the board before we take a motion.
I just have a couple of comments. Chris, first of all, thank you for putting this together as a result of the feedback we'd given you at previous meetings. I think it's important to note, too, that in the draft ordinance, the new Environmental Advisory Council will be seven members, which is the same amount of members that our Green Advisory Council has, slightly larger than our current advisory, Environmental Advisory Council has. One question I did have, I noticed that the terms for the new Environmental Advisory Council are set at three years under the draft ordinance. Was there a rationale for that? I know a lot of our other advisory boards and commissions tend to be about four years, or I think zoning hearing board is five. So what was the rationale for three years? And would it be possible to increase the length of those terms?
I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, that the original 1974 Environmental Advisory Council was three years, and we kept it at that. I also know that this particular board, there is often a lot of changeover. And this hopefully gets more interest, even increasing the allowed members to seven. We currently only have four members listed. So we're hoping that this way we can continue to have members. And I believe at least one of the members has been involved since the beginning of the current Green Advisory Council. So even though the three-year terms, it allows us to continue to advertise for more interest in this. But we can, if the board is interested in extending that, we can certainly do that and include that before we send the draft to legal.
My preference would just be to keep it consistent with, say, the planning commission, which is four years or some of our other boards. So other than that, that's my only comment. Thank you, and look forward to hopefully seeing this again soon.
I'm curious, Chris. You mentioned that the turnover tends to be a little bit more often with this type of a board. Would it be your recommendation to keep it at three, knowing that the terms, even though they expire, it's till another member is appointed? And if the board chose to extend this later, we could make a change?
That's currently how it operates. With the, I can't remember the Green Advisory Council, the terms as currently, but there are several members who their time has lapsed, but there hasn't been anyone who has come in and offered to be on that board. So those members have been reappointed until there is another membership. We'll continue to look at appointing anyone who's interested in this board and still serving in this purpose. So I would, I like the idea of having a shorter term limit, just so that we can continue to gauge the interest of our members on this. And we hope that by providing this revised ordinance, it provides a little bit more direction to this interested board. And we hopefully, coming out of some of the plans that we're doing, we'll have more involvement for them and hopefully get interested more residents to be involved.
Sure. Thank you. Any other comments? Any public comment on this agenda item?
Commissioner Kelly, I have a comment.
Of course.
I believe the three-year term is consistent with state statutes that allows for an EAC to be adopted.
Very good. That makes sense. Thank you. If there's no public comment and no other board comment, do I have a motion to send this draft amendment to the township? this draft amendment to the Township Solicitor for legal review?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Moving on to Agenda Item 6B, Direction Discussion Update of Ordinance for the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission, and I'll call on our Planner, Greg Adams, to present this agenda item.
Thank you. I'm going dovetail off of what Chris said. Basically, this is a follow-up. This would be the second of the boards that we're looking at updating. Once again, if you would look through it, you would notice that it was very similar to the EAC in layout, and that's, of course, intentional to be consistent. We're planning that all of our boards have that same consistency. So, it helps staff work through the boards, and quite frankly, it makes it easier for laypeople out there to understand the boards as well. So, basically, we're doing the same thing. This is part of a puzzle, because the current Article III Landscape and Shade Tree Commission has a lot of the regulation of shade trees within it. So, back in July, we brought to you a proposal to remove the regulation from the Boards and Commissions portion, Chapter 17, and create a new chapter, Chapter 334 Trees. So, with that piece, we're now updating what's left over, which will be the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Most of what you see in here is drawn from the current Article III, lengths of term, number of members, et cetera. We did update it for consistency with our template for the rest of the items there. We're once again asking for this to go to legal for review. If you have any specific questions, we can ask them now, or you can give me a call, and I can answer them more in-depth as needed.
Very good. Thank you, Greg. Open up to the Board. Any comments or questions on this ordinance? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to send this draft amendment to the Township Solicitor for legal review?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Moving on to Resolutions. We have a Resolution Appointing Housel Levine Associates LLC as a professional services consultant for planning services, and I will call on our Long Range Planner again, Chris Stroller, to present this agenda item.
Thank you. At the August 16, 2023 Board Meeting, the Board was apprised of a potential consultant to help us evaluate the zoning ordinance update and potential zoning changes. This consultant, Housel Levine Associates, is proposing to utilize a tool, ArcGIS Urban. It is a GIS-based software that will help us evaluate potential zoning scenarios for the Jordan Valley land use category, which we identified in the Comprehensive Plan. These scenarios will then be utilized in the development of zone changes for this larger land use category. Once the process is established, we can apply this to different land uses as identified in the Comprehensive Plan following that. Housel Levine Associates has provided a professional services agreement between the township for services not to exceed $33,000, $33,430. Once this agreement is executed, Township staff and the consultant team will schedule a kickoff meeting and begin to identify the tasks identified in the attached scope of services. Township staff will work with the consultant team to develop a separate scope of work following this one to begin work on the actual zoning code review. And based on our early conversations with them, this is estimated to be between $30,000 and $45,000. Once we get to this point, the secondary scope will be brought to the Board of Commissioners for review. So, attached, you have the professional services agreement with Housel Levine for the task identified to implement ArcGIS Urban, to evaluate potential zoning changes in the Jordan Valley, and begin the process for us to look into future zoning changes. And we are looking for approval of the resolution to enter into this professional services agreement.
Thank you for that presentation. It's been distributed to the Board in advance. Are there any comments or questions on this agenda item?
I just have a quick comment. I'm happy that we were thinking outside the box with this going forward. Zoning is crucial to harmonious land development and land use, and we've got to get it right. So, thank you for that, and I'm looking forward to what they have to offer.
Very good comment. I would agree, and thank you again for your continued focus of the CD staff, Community Development staff, to continue to work on implementation and moving us forward. Any other comments by the Board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt a resolution appointing Housel Levine as professional consultant for planning services and approving said contract?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And to Item 7B, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, 2023 Pennsylvania Gaming Local Share Account, Lehigh-Northampton Counties Grant Program to Provide Funding to Be Used for the Purchase of Traffic Calming and Public Safety Equipment. And I'll ask our Township Manager to present this agenda item.
Thank you. So, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Account Grant Program for Lehigh and Northampton Counties provides funding to municipalities to support and enhance community and economic well-being. Township staffs proposing to apply to the LSA grant program for Lehigh and Northampton for funding to purchase traffic calming and traffic safety equipment and materials. So, we estimate that these cost estimates will not exceed $100,000. There's no local match funding requirement for this grant program. This request is consistent with both the Township's Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted earlier this year, as well as the recently adopted traffic calming policy. So, traffic calming is a combination of mainly physical measures designed to reduce speed, alter driver behavior, and improve traffic safety conditions for motorized and non-motorized users. So, some examples of temporary traffic control devices that we would use as part of this grant funding would be including, but not limited to, speed humps, mobile speed boards, cones, barriers, and related signage. So, we would hope to implement those items throughout the township in accordance with both policies. So, we seek a motion to approve the resolution authorizing Township staff to apply for the LSA grant through the Lehigh-Northampton Program, with an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Thank you to you and staff for continually looking for grant opportunities to assist the township. And given that we had public comment tonight regarding some speeding on a road, it would be very helpful for the township to have additional equipment to help with that. I will open up to the Board if there are any comments or questions on this resolution? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Agenda Item 7C, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, adopting the 2023 South Whitehall Township Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan. And Chris Stroller, would you present this agenda item?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Similar to the Township Comprehensive Plan, which is a high-level view of what we're doing in the township and the vision for the future, a Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan does the same thing. This is to look at really the goals and the vision for the Parks and Recreation Department for over the next 10 years. This particular process has occurred over the past, I'd say, two years with extensive public involvement, including public meetings, surveys, keepers and interviews. And tonight, we present the draft Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan. This has also been reviewed by the Steering Committee involved, including members of the Board of Commissioners and members of the Park and Recreation Board. And at the September 11, 2023 Park and Recreation Board Meeting, the Board unanimously voted to recommend adoption of this plan. So, we are looking for a motion from the Board to release this draft plan for a 30-day public comment period, given if there are any significant changes. Or if there are not any significant changes, we would come back following that public comment period and look to the Board for adoption of this plan.
Very good. Thank you, Chris, and thank you all to staff, to the Steering Committee, and also the Park and Rec Committee for input and work to bring this to the Board in draft form at this point. My only question was, the public comment period, how will that be advertised to our community if they'd like to review and make comments?
Mm-hmm. So, it's, the plan is currently listed as a page on our Township website under Parks and Recreation. We'll advertise it similarly on the website, and we'll have a copy here, and we'll probably have a flyer here for that at the Township building. We will most likely have it posted through our social media on the Parks and Recreation page, and that comments can come in either through email or a letter to the Township. We will make that known on the Township website, how people can submit comments.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Questions? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed only with the release of the draft 2023 South Whitehall Township Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan for a 30-day public comment period?
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. I'm going to move down to Agenda Item 8A, and I will go back up to 7D in just a moment. So, we are on Agenda Item 8A. We have a motion to proceed with adoption of the Civil Service promotional list for entry-level position of patrol officer in the South Whitehall Township Police Department, and I'll ask our Police Chief, Glenn Dorni, to please present this agenda item.
Thank you very much. The Police Department has conducted civil service testing for entry-level patrol officer positions via the Lehigh County Chiefs of Police Association Consortium Test. All aspects of the testing process have been completed, to include the physical assessment, written exam, and oral examination. Civil Service Commission certified the eligibility list this morning, September 20, 2023, and there is no expense to this testing process. So, I am officially requesting the Board of Commissioners make a motion to adopt the newly certified civil service list for entry-level patrol officer.
Very good, Chief. Thank you. Open up to the Board if there's any comments or questions.
How does the list look as far as?
I am very optimistic. I could tell you that since we made the adjustments to the civil service rules, we had 70 applicants that were for South Whitehall Township only, not only, but South Whitehall Township. The Township of Whitehall only had 27, who still requires college requirements. So, we more than doubled what we would have had eligible for us by doing that. And I can tell you from doing the interviews for the last two days, it was a very good group of individuals, and I'm very, I'm looking forward to the next, I guess, resolution with the top three candidates. Chief, welcome.
Great news. Any other Board comment? Any from the public? Of course. Would you please come up to the microphone and just give us your name and address, please? I'm sorry.
There should be a motorcycle safety feature.
Chief Dorni, I would ask you to address that question. Thank you for stopping to assist.
Thank you, Hayden.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment at this time? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
Second.
We have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. I will now move back up to Agenda Item 7D. We have a resolution extending conditional offer of employment for the entry-level position of patrol officer in the Township's Police Department to three candidates, conditioned upon the individual's satisfactorily completing medical and psychological examinations to confirm their fitness for duty. And Chief Dorni, if you'd present as well.
Yes, thank you very much. We are requesting the Board of Commissioners to extend conditional offer of employment for entry-level patrol officer in South Whitehall Township to applicant number 61252, 62988, and 05271, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing the background investigation, polygraph exam, medical exam, and psychological examination to confirm their fitness for duty. And this is just a process where it doesn't mean they're going to definitely be employed. I have high hopes, but the top three candidates, we have three vacancies right now, and I'm confident that they will meet the needs, hopefully. One is already a police officer in the state of California. One already is in the academy now in Montgomery County that will graduate in December, and the third individual would need the academy. So, it would be a great benefit for us to be able to successfully complete their background investigations and get them on the department.
Excellent. Very good.
Just a quick question, Chief. On the candidate from California?
Yes.
Was that, I'm not sure we mentioned that, you mentioned it once before. We received some inquiry from an individual in California?
Yes.
Then we went out on, as a South Whitehall Police Department, correct?
Yes.
Is that, so that came from that?
Yeah, he's actually the son-in-law of an individual we know here that works in the valley, that our Police Department works with quite a bit. Our, some of our officers are friends with him. He mentioned how good of a department we have, and that his son-in-law would like to come back to this area. They would like to bring the family back out of California, and he only put in for us.
Okay, that was some of the things we talked about. Great.
Yep. Yes, and our recruitment process, several of us went out to the Reading Police Academy about a week before the due date for the consortium, and we had four individuals from that academy class from that, that little discussion that we had that day, came in and tested only for us, when they could have put in for the other 12 departments on the consortium, but they only put in for us. So, I think it was a very successful year of recruiting.
Excellent. Congratulations.
I just have an additional question on the applicant pool. If you can't answer, let me know. Among different categories of applicants, transfers from other departments, transfers from, say, out of even the area, or brand-new to the law enforcement field, where have you seen the largest increase, or is it too hard to tell at this point?
I don't want to put a certain police department on the hook, but there's a, there are several applicants from one police department, not necessarily this immediate area, but close by.
Understood.
That, yes, would be probably good pickups for us there, so they're kind of waiting in the wings as well. But yes, we are getting people with experience, which is good.
Which we can assume might be because of our changing of the civil service.
Civil service and the MOU that the Union and the Board came to with giving the entry-level salary for previous experience. So, I think that helped.
Excellent. No other Board comments at this time? Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve a resolution extending conditional offer of employment to candidates number 61252, 62988, and 05271?
So moved.
Second.
Motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Chief. Moving down now to Agenda Item 8B, we have a motion to proceed with approval of proposed security bond for a major plan entitled Montar Group LLC Proposed Self-Storage Building. Ask our Township Manager to present this agenda item.
So, basically, an application to further develop the property located at 3350 and 34 Walbert Avenue has been previously submitted. If, as the Board will recall, the plan proposes to consolidate the two parcels, raise the existing residential and agricultural constructions, and then construct a three-story, 112,800-square-foot self-storage facility, a 16-space parking lot and associated stormwater management facilities. Basically, at this time, the project has already been approved. The applicant is seeking to secure the required public improvements through a combination of cash security and a surety bond. It amounts to be secured a total of just over $717,000, of which the applicant is proposing to secure $100,000 in cash escrow and the remaining $617,235.75 through a surety bond from Merchant National Bonding Incorporated, which has an office in Reading, PA. The applicant has already posted $20,000 in cash escrow as part of a pre-security construction Staff has no issues with this request overall. We would respectfully request a motion to approve both the acceptance of the cash security and the surety bond as proposed.
Thank you, Tom. Open up to the Board if there's any comments or questions on this motion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. And to Item 8C, we have a motion to proceed with adoption of the procurement card policy. I'll ask our Township Manager again to present this agenda item.
Thank you. It is the intent of the Township to use procurement cards for the following authorized purchases only: emergency purchases, online subscriptions or dues, conference registration, training, where the vendor will not allow the Township to be billed, and hotel accommodations to be paid in full with the reservation when the hotel allows you to do so. We have Uh, we have prepared a draft procurement card policy, uh, which was collectively worked on by the purchasing agent, myself and Herb Bender, and we have enclosed all that policy as well as all the corresponding forms. For your reference, it's also been reviewed, um, the purchasing policy was reviewed by legal, um, in which this was a supplemental, uh, policy to, to the, the overarching purchasing policy. At this point, uh, the board had a number of questions, um, on the policy. We've, we've successfully addressed all of those, um, including, um, the card limit, ensuring that the end user would have to pay the Township back if the, uh, they were responsible for using the card and incurring unauthorized charges. And, um, it also confirms, uh, the issuance of the cards, that there would be two to the police department, one to Parks and Recreation, one to Community Development, one to the Director of Town, uh, Township Operations, and one to the Township Manager. So at this point, we are looking to, uh, confirm the adoption of the procurement card policy.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, the forms have been distributed to the board in advance for your review. Are there any questions or comments? I know we've seen this a number of times. Are there any comments from the board before we take a motion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with adoption of the procurement card policy?
Make a motion.
I'll, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. And Item 8D, we have a motion to proceed with the installation of signage on Eck Road and Crackers Port Road. And I'll ask our Director of Operations, Herb Bender, to present this agenda.
Administration is respectfully asking to install a 225 mile an hour speed limit signs to Eck Road at the sharp right turn and left turn signal, signs. This will help with the safety measures on Eck Road. On Crackers Port Road, we are looking to install a 35 mile per hour speed limit sign about 400 feet north of Eck Road to help with the speeding concerns. Uh, the action requested is administration is respectfully looking for a motion to proceed with the new signs on Eck Road and Crackers Port Road. Uh, the budget line, there is none for these. We have these signs installed.
Very good. Thank you, Herb.
Just the one thing I did want to, uh, clarify on here. There is the one sign request that asked for the speed limit, no parking, and the arrow sign. Those, the arrow sign and the no parking sign have been reinstalled. They magically went missing. So that has been reinstalled. So now the only part that has to be installed there is just the speed limit sign.
Okay, very good. Thank you for clarifying. Are there any questions from the board?
I just have a question for the chief. I, I think we had discussed once that maybe some of you guys would be hanging out over there. Um, has that happened and is, has it been, uh, somewhat beneficial in the sense of cutting down the speed limits or? I, I know, I know radar doesn't have a Pennsylvania.
Yeah, we, we haven't really noticed any speeding issues up there. We, we sit there when we can, um, but we don't, we don't see it. We haven't noticed any issues with, with anything going on up there. So it's very rare. It's hit or miss if it does happen. Um, a lot of times when radio lets out, you'll see a handful of the first initial cars will try to get out of there very quickly, but then the line of cars, it doesn't really, it's not conducive to have a, a ton of cars flying down the road.
Thanks, Chief.
Any other board comments or questions? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with the installation of signage on Eck Road and Crackers Port Road? So moved. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Then Item 8E, we have a motion to approve the 2024 Minimum Municipal Obligation MMO for Police, Public Works, and Office Personnel Defined Benefit Pension Plans, and approval of the 2024 MMO for Non-Uniformed Employees Defined Contribution Pension Plan. I'll ask Tom Petrucci to again present this agenda item.
Thank you. So following up on the recommendation and guidance that was provided during the Wednesday, July 26, 2023 Pension Committee meeting, the Executive Office is respectfully requesting a motion to approve the 2024 Minimum Municipal Obligation for the Police, Public Works, and Office Personnel Defined Benefit Pension Plans, as well as the approval of the 2024 MMO for Non-Uniformed Employees Defined Contribution Pension Plan. The Commonwealth requires public agencies to approve the MMOs for each of the respective pension plans on or before September 30th of each fiscal year. The worksheet percentages for the defined benefit plans are derived from the Actuarial Valuation Report dated 1/1/21 that was previously submitted to the Commonwealth in accordance with Act 205 requirements. The defined contribution plan is a flat percentage of 6% for the employer contribution. The Township will receive its state aid allocation for 2023 on or before September, September 30th. We've already received notification of, um, the amount. But once the funds are deposited, the Township is required to then distribute, distribute the funds into the custodian bank for the pension plan. Um, I will notify the Board of Commissioners once this action has been completed. The above referenced MMOs will be included in the 2024 Preliminary and Draft Operating Budget for the review of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, the amounts are as follows. So for the Office Pension Plan, um, the defined benefit amount is 770,730. For the Police Pension Plan, it's 1,241,903. For the Public Works Pension Plan, it's 681,576. And for the Defined Contribution Plan, it's 210,571. And that's combined of the Office and, and Public Works. Total is 2,904,779. Compared to last year, the MMO was 2,854,362. So just, just about $50,000 increase from last year. Uh, so we will need to complete a new valuation, um, submitted by March of 2024, which will be dated 1/1/2023. So we are working through that with the Pension Committee to come up with different options to the board, um, because we are anticipating a higher MMO, um, based on the, uh, actuarial losses that were effectuated in 2022.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation, Tom. Are there any comments or questions from the board on this motion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll open it to the public. Any comments or questions? Okay, and seeing none, I have, may I have a motion to approve said motion for the 2024 Minimum Municipal Obligation?
Motion. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item 8F, we have a motion to proceed with vehicle replacements in the Southway Hall Township Police Department. I'll call again on our chief, Glenn Dorni, to present.
All right, round two. Uh, the police department is in the process of fleet upgrades and are requesting authorization to purchase four new patrol vehicles. One vehicle will be a sergeant patrol supervisor vehicle, two will be a frontline patrol vehicle, and one will be an unmarked frontline patrol vehicle. Uh, this is necessary due to aging fleet vehicles that need to be replaced and taken out of service due to excessive mileage and safety concerns. Quotes for the vehicles were obtained from Whitmore Auto Group utilizing CoStarz pricing. We're requesting the purchase of four Chevrolet Tahoe Police Package vehicles. The marked vehicle CoStarz price is $48,000 with an upfitting cost of $21,121.80 for a total cost of $69,121.80 each. The unmarked vehicle CoStarz price is also $48,000 with an upfitting cost of $22,935.54 for a total cost of $70,935.54. The overall total for the four vehicles two, is $278,394.94. The extended bumper-to-bumper warranty is $2,495 per vehicle for an additional cost of $9,980. The total cost with the extended warranties would be $288,280.94. And with that budget line, um, like we talked about last time, that would leave after the grant money that we received and the budgeted amount in the capital account would leave $12,557.82 left after the purchase of those vehicles.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. I will open it up to the board for any comments or questions.
Yeah, I have a comment. At the last meeting, I was under the impression we were going to have an informal meeting to discuss all this. And, uh, fortunately or unfortunately, I went on vacation, but I did have my cell phone with me, but I never was contacted to have a meeting. Um, we, and I, I'm like, did I miss it something? And then when I, uh, read the agenda, um, based what, Wednesday, Monday night, I saw that was on there. Uh, and again, I thought, so I said, I must have missed a meeting, but I'm finding out I didn't miss a meeting. So I'm a little confused. I thought we were having a meeting, an informal meeting to discuss this.
Yeah, we, we looked at our collective schedules and there was really no time to schedule a meeting, unfortunately. Yeah, I should have sent you an email and I apologize for that.
No problem.
Other board comments?
I know I was asked to get some, uh, information from other departments as well, which I did. Um, the largest department, which I think is probably the most, um, accurate one, would be the New York State Police. Um, they have 69 of these vehicles in, uh, service and they completely got away from Fords due to excessive issues, um, that they've had in their maintenance costs and the, uh, breakdowns that they had in the Fords, which is, um, telling for a, a large agency like that. Their indication from, uh, the Sergeant in Charge of the Fleet, it says the, if it had, had them in service, uh, they're all under warranty, have not, uh, had any major issues with them whatsoever. And, uh, the only problem they've had is if they didn't initially buy the extra key fobs, they had to buy the aftermarket ones and sometimes they didn't learn how to program the, the keys properly. So they suggested just buying the extra key fob to come with it, which I believe are in the package that we have. So that's essentially out of 69 vehicles, they have no issues with them. Um, and the other departments locally, Upper Salkin has them. They have had no issues with them. They enjoy them. They like them. They've been, uh, good for them in service. And we had one come today from GM, which Tom and I and some of the other officers actually sat in, drove, and, uh, we're all in agreement that it's a much better vehicle than what the Ford is that we're currently driving.
I'll just make a comment. At the last meeting, after reviewing the information that you provided to us, um, I had no significant objections to this request. I'm fine with it. My position hasn't changed. So unless there's any other board comment, I would make a motion to approve the request.
I do have a comment to make. Um, I've certainly thought long and hard about this and we certainly had plenty of conversation in our last meeting. And having reviewed the audit and listening to the presentation tonight and realizing that the tract of change that this township has made over the last couple of years to, um, have a much more focused discussion and analysis of our budget. Um, I know management noted taking specific long-range thinking and forecasting into account key factors. I think that has greatly helped our township as we've moved forward. One of the comments I made at the last meeting was, um, not wanting to do the same things just because we've always done them. And these types of principles are what guide me when I make a decision with every bu- budget expenditure. And I think it's appropriate to consider these issues tonight. One of the things I discussed at the last meeting, which I think is critical for us, is to have our Township Manager and staff work to conduct a comprehensive evaluation and analysis of our entire inventory of vehicles and equipment township-wide. It's something we don't have. To have a five and 10-year replacement plan with objective criteria for us to develop a consistent policy as we purchase future vehicles and equipment, including branding, disposal, and overall fleet management. Doing things piecemeal and starting down a road, um, where we don't have the information that many of the board members asked for at our last meeting, um, causes me to hesitate to move forward in a new direction, not understanding the implication it may have township-wide, um, for all the vehicles that we have in all of our departments. Um, so at this time, you know, my inclination would be to continue with the Ford Explorers that were the request of the department, uh, police department during the budget season last year and to ask management and staff to begin to analyze and make a plan moving forward for all vehicles so that we, as a board, can make these critical decisions, um, fully educated on life of the vehicle, cost of ownership, what are the needs of our township specifically, and how do we best meet them across all departments? And that's, um, something that this township has not had historically, and I think it would be very beneficial to our board, to our management, and our citizens as we move forward so that we all understand what our needs are and have an objective criteria moving forward.
I have a, an additional question. A chief, a change from our memo at the last meeting. Under the section Alternatives, number three, to compare vehicles, the BOC could approve the purchase of two Chevy Tahoe patrol vehicles and two Ford SUVs. This would allow the township to evaluate the vehicles side by side in real-life comparison to determine which vehicle serves the needs of the department best. I assume that kind of came as a potential compromise?
Yes.
Situation. Could you just give us an overview? What would that evaluation process look like throughout the year if we were to purchase two of each?
We would be able to track the maintenance on the vehicles and actually look at how they service the community with how much downtime there is. The problem that we face now is that we know we have a known problem with the Fords. We absolutely have a problem with them. The water pumps go on every one of them. Today, as a matter of fact, one of our newer vehicles, Officer Webb was in the parking lot, traction control lights started flashing while the electronics started flashing. The car's a year old. We have problems with those. They're known. Other departments have those same known problems and have gotten away from those problems because I think we're throwing good money at bad. And that's my responsibility as a department head to take the data that I have from other municipalities as well as our own and look to see what's best for the township, be responsible with our dollar, and get our officers the vehicle that they need to do their job properly. To put them in a slightly larger vehicle to be able to take the equipment that they need. Unfortunately, we live in a world where we have to have breaching equipment in our cars. We have AEDs in our car. We have rifles in our car. We have plate carriers. The officers have to bring a ton of gear with them. If you look in the back of those Ford Explorers, there is no way that everything fits in there. There are brooms stuck up sideways. There is gear all over the place. It does not fit in the cars. And you can see, I guess you could say it's probably a, an item that is dear to the officers that are sitting in the back of the room or else they would not have come here, and that was of their own volition, not mine. Um, but they're the ones that spend 12 hours a day in these cars. They do not fit in a lot of these cars. There are several officers back there. If they would stand up, they're in excess of six foot three, six foot four. My job is to get them the tools they need to do their job. It's hard for me to come up here and try to request vehicles that are knower flawed, that don't serve our community the way they should because we can't put the necessary equipment in them. When it's the same price, actually $1,000 cheaper per vehicle, better maintenance records with those vehicles, they have a better warranty. It's a five-year, uh, $100,000 or $100,000 mile powertrain warranty on it versus the Ford is three years, 36,000 miles. The rep that was here today has made multiple statements that typically in the past, if you have a major issue with one of the cars, GM makes good for it. No cost to the township. Is it guaranteed? No. However, typically they do. His comment was, blow an engine, it's on us. Blow two, it's on you. So I feel pretty confident after driving the vehicle today. I've driven them before. The ebbs and flows in law enforcement, like I said, when I started with Chevy Caprices. Chevy was the market. That's who made them. Chevy got out of making the Caprices. They went to, um, Lumina's, they went to different things. It didn't serve the purpose of what you do in law enforcement. Crown Vics came out. Ford, their business model is to sell police cars. That's what they do. They make money off police cars. Chevy loses money on police cars. They can make a lot more money off those vehicles that they're building for police to turn them into Cadillac Escalades and make 80 to $100,000 off that. They're selling them at a lower price because they believe in the law enforcement philosophy. So I don't care either way. I'm not a fan of either. I don't care. I want what's going to do best for the officers that are on this department. It's going to serve our community and save the money in the long run for the township. If you look at the cost of ownership over the lifespan of a vehicle, the trade-in value of the Chevys are so much higher than the Fords at the end of it. Um, and I think that's all something to be taken into consideration. And I think by just going back to, to Fords, we know it's a known problem. We know it doesn't serve the people that work here. It's their office for 12 hours a day. They don't fit in the Fords. It's difficult. I had to drive one of them for, for a day when my car was down. I have a lump on the side of my head because, as you can see, wearing a vest and a gun belt, you can't bend over very well. I hit my head on the side of the car and I, maybe I'm clumsy a little bit, but we don't fit in these cars. And it's my responsibility to them in the back of the room and the department to stand up here for them, to try to fight for what's best for them. And I think, quite frankly, for the township. So that would be my request, but obviously we need police cars. So that would be my request, but obviously we need police cars. So am I going to die on this hill? No, I'm not. But I think it's the best thing for the township. I think it's the best thing, we have a fleet plan moving forward that we would like to do and implement because our problem is some of our vehicles, like the SRO vehicles, they are aging. We, we keep taking the vehicles that should no longer be in the fleet, but we try to extend them for a year at a time. That's not a plan. The plan should be get a car that's in very good shape yet at 70,000 to 80,000 miles, convert that into an SRO car and we'll get five to seven years out of that again. Right now, we're taking it, we're converting it to an SRO car and we're spending a ton of money to keep it running for a year or two and we're throwing good money at that. And I want to get away from that cycle, just like you said, it's our responsibility to evaluate what we have, we've done that. We've looked at options and I think this is the best option or else I wouldn't be here tonight. I wouldn't be here proposing this. So as a, as a professional in this field, I think it's the best thing for this department to do moving forward. Now, if it was a $10,000 difference, which it had been in the past, I wouldn't be sitting here asking for this. However, with the price $1,000 less than the Fords and having known problems, I think it's the best option to do right now to try to, to do that. That's my personal opinion. Ultimately not my decision, but.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I appreciate and respect everything you've said. As I've said at the last meeting, I want you all to have what you need to stay safe and keep our community safe. And I've lost sleep over this. I've also made a promise to our community that I would spend their money wisely. I don't see much of a difference between this last meeting that we had on September 6th and this meeting today showing me some real life data. I know now the initial expense may be less, but long term, what are the maintenance costs? Is there data on that? Long term, what are the fuel expenses? It's a V8 engine. What's the data on that? Yes, I want you to be comfortable, I want you to have room, but I also want to be responsible with our, our money. This is all very new to me. I sat up here and I approved the budget. And at the last budget, it was requested that we provide, was it four interceptors? And it seemed like everything was okay, I didn't hear any kind of complaint about the interceptors at that point. But now all of a sudden, I'm hearing all these complaints and it's really alarming. So I still would like to have some long term data. I'd like to know some fuel costs.
If I can jump in on the fuel costs, we did a comparison with Upper Salkin, who's very similar to us. The Tahos actually had better fuel mileage than the current Explorers that are on the lot out here. Not looking on any kind of magazine, looking at real data from police cars that are operating on our roadways, looking at the dash, what is the miles per gallon? It was a mile or two better on the Tahos than it was on our Ford Explorers.
Okay, so long term, do you have maybe a yearly fuel cost or a yearly maintenance cost? Do you have data like that? Because I'm sitting here and sure, I can make a decision for what's, what's best for today, but I'm looking 10 years down the road and I'm thinking, what's fiscally the best way to go? And in the next 10 years, there may be something even better. I don't know, I just don't want to get caught in any kind of lease program or something where we are bound and we have to pay the costs now when fuel is so high. And again, I'm just a little confused. The interceptors were okay last year, we all approved the budget. What happened?
We've blown a motor and multiple water pumps on the cars. The, the problem is they switched over the body style and everything else like two, three years ago. My impression is I think they're trying to get everybody to force them into an EV world. They are not the same vehicle they were three years ago. Those vehicles, once they hit their 20,000 miles, 30,000 miles is when the problems start. Also, three years ago, a Chevy Tahoe was eight to $10,000 more expensive. So quite frankly, it was not an option. We also didn't have the five police officers that are six foot four, six foot five on the department three, four years ago. We do now. Times have changed, the needs have changed, and I think now the options have changed. We quite frankly, didn't have that option. Again, if we could go back to a Chevy Caprice that didn't have computers, didn't have cameras in it, I'd be all for it. We can't do that. But the, the fuel mileage is better on a Tahoe. And again, we're not going to have these cars for 10 years. Police cars do not last 10 years. This is something that's going to be a, a five to seven year vehicle if it's in a frontline position unless we take it out of service at the right time to put it in a position like an SRO position or detective position that you can then extend that lifestyle, that it's not on the road all day long. That's what needs to be done with a fleet management plan. And all we keep doing is putting a Band-Aid on our plan right now.
Okay, and historically, we have had Tahos, I even believe we had a Suburban. Why did we stop that program? Why did we get rid of them?
I was a cop in the city of Allentown, I do not know.
Does anyone historically know why this, this happened?
Actually Sergeant Elheiser could probably speak to that.
Please come to the microphone. Sir, if you'd just wait, there are people online that won't be able to hear you unless you shut the microphone, I apologize.
Push the button.
So many rules.
At that time was a Crown Victoria. We had, I've been here 20 years, we had one Suburban, which was like a 1984 or 85 Suburban that got sold off the year I started. And we had, we always had two two wheel drive Tahos. They were frontline cars, they were patrol cars. The, they, they did extremely well. They are an entirely different vehicle than today's vehicle. They're, they're not even, I believe, other than being frame, body on frame, there's no similarities between them. They did well, they held up with, they held up with the Crown Victorias, they became too expensive. The gap between the Crown Victoria and the Tahoe kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And I believe when we got rid of our last two two wheel drive Tahos, which would have been, it would have been a two, I think they were both 2005s, somewhere around 2008 or 2009, the gap was somewhere around $10,000 between then the Crown Victoria and this. You want me to keep going, Chief?
You can answer whatever question, you have the history on it.
The Ford Explorers, when they stopped production of the Crown Victoria and went to the Ford Explorer, they were based on a very competent platform from another car make. They changed that completely three years ago or four years ago. The water pump issue, the motor issue, the massive oil leaks because they, the drive shaft, the front drive shaft on that vehicle goes directly through, through the transmission pan. And it is, we do unimaginable things to cars. In, in their service, within policy and within law, the, they're not holding up, they're just not holding up. They're, and when they go out of service, they, they most of the time have to go back to the dealer for service, they're gone for at least a month at a time. I don't think any of them have been gone for less than that. It is becoming, it's to the point where it's ridiculous that any township, anybody is still paying for Ford's offering to the police world. I, I know, the, the Suburbans are, are the Tahos are a true body on frame vehicle. They hold up better, or they have in the past. So there it is.
So all these problems just happened within the past year since the request.
They changed, they changed the drivetrain of the vehicle and they changed the, the body of the, of the interceptors. Three years ago, I believe. Look, we have 314 is one of the older ones in the fleet. That's an almost, almost an entirely different vehicle than the newer ones in the fleet.
So I have to ask, as a municipality, have we voiced this concern to where we bought them from? Because there's strength, this is a separate issue from what we're discussing tonight, but anytime you purchase a product and there's a serious issue that you're explaining to us tonight, have we voiced as a municipality our displeasure with the changes that they've had? So that they, as an industry, realize there's a problem as well. I can tell you, this is the first time that I'm hearing of any problems in the vehicles that we have and it makes me question why the township has purchased vehicles.
Well, I believe.
For the last, since these changes, I, I wasn't aware of them as a commissioner.
I can explain that after dealing with the garage. That's why you do see, we do take the extended warranty because of these issues. The water pumps, the axles that are going through the transmission, that, that is the real reason we take the extended warranty because of those issues. If not, we're going to be paying out of pocket for those. It's cheaper to take the extended warranty than it is to pay for all those repairs.
I think that's a very wise idea.
But you're also taking the extended warranty on the Tahos.
You, you wouldn't have to. You, you can back that extended, extended warranty off the Tahoe because the Tahoe comes with a five year, 100,000 mile powertrain warranty. And everything that is going in the Explorer would be covered on the powertrain warranty.
It's not bumper to bumper, but the main issues, we did see the, the warranty that offered by Chevrolet and we kind of further refined that today when we spoke to a GM representative.
I'm not losing sleep over this like Monica. But it's, it's, I, I guess indirectly, I, what happened from a year ago to today, which I think has kind of been explained. And why does so many other, I mean, you mentioned New York State Police, 69 vehicles. That's well, that's all well and good for New York, but I'm looking at Pennsylvania State Police, which is where I live here.
They're switching to them as well.
They're all Ford Explorers. And the Jeeps, I now saw the other day down the turnpike, they Grandjeep Cherokees rigged up for, uh, unmarked.
They're doing an evaluation that the reason they, they went to the Dodge Chargers, quite frankly, is because they missed the order bank on Chevys and Fords. You have to order these for a CoStar while they have their own state contract pricing. So when they tried to order the cars, they were no longer making them. So they didn't get them. They actually had cars that they had taken out of service with the expectation that they were getting new cars in, that they had to reupfit and put back on the road with 145, 150,000 miles because they had taken them out of service because they couldn't get cars.
Are we talking about state?
State police, Pennsylvania State Police. So they're actually doing an evaluation where they have bought a bunch of Tahos, a bunch of Dodges, and I could tell you, our mechanic will probably shoot me if we try to go to Dodges, which are too small anyway. We've done that in the past and they're, they're the cheapest to buy and the most expensive to maintain. And then the Fords. So, and the Fords, they've had nothing but problems with them as well. So again, the, the reason it comes up now is because in 2020, 2021, by the time we ordered those cars during COVID, we were getting them a year later, a year and a half later after we bought them. And by the time they started to hit that 20,000 mile mark, 25,000 miles, that's when the water pumps go, that's when the oil leaks come. So now we're at that point that those cars are all hitting at the same time and we're having all these massive problems. So I, I think it's irresponsible of me if we don't look at something different and get the data and the research. And I can't get too much data on 2023 Tahos because they're just made. So there's not a whole lot of data out there other than the fact that, you know, 22s and 23s have been flawless. Everybody I've spoken to, they say they're workhorses. Do the brakes cost a little bit more? Yes, they do. The Brembo brakes on the front are almost twice as expensive. However, we had had this discussion today, just like Sergeant Edelheiser said, not that we do atrocious things to these vehicles, however, we're responding to emergency calls. When they do brake testing on vehicles, they start, they get to a speed and they hit the brakes, they stop, they pull the data, the brakes cool down, they go back and do it again. We don't have the luxury of that. When we're driving and we're going somewhere, emergency lights and sirens, we're going at a little bit of an increased speed, somebody pulls out in front of us, we slam on the brakes, a red light comes up, we slam on the brakes, stop sign, we stop, go up again. We do that multiple times before we get to a scene. I can tell you that half the time officers arrive on scene, you pray to God you have brakes left by the time you go to stop. Even in my expedition, I don't go all the time to, to as many calls as nearly as they do, lights and sirens. But if you do that and you've gone through a repetitive cycle of speeding up, slowing down, speeding up, slowing down to try to get there safely, by the time you get there, your brakes are shot. Sometimes they're smoking and sometimes they go to the floor and you just pray to God you don't hit something. And with the Brembo brakes, that's why Chevy has come up with that, that platform to do that, they perform much better. They're a ceramic base, I believe, and a stainless steel that they hold up to those increased temperatures. That's why they've done it. And.
I did, I read a lot of this, what you put in, in fact, I read all of it and I was concerned about the 2010 vehicle report. For 2024 budget, not, not present budget, but the next year's budget, which we'll be looking at in October to be approved later this year. Do you have vehicles in there?
Not yet. Guess it all depends on tonight. We do, we will have vehicles, but we don't have a number yet.
I'd also like to kind of dovetail off of Commissioner Kelly's comments. I think we probably need to put together a full plan.
Well, that's what I'm.
When you're reviewing this budget time, it's going to be a perfunctory action and we'll know exactly what vehicles need to get.
Well, that's, that's what I was leading up to. I mean, we, we can go on all night here or, or we can call for the vote. I, I guess not knowing that number is, is again, I get back to what I said when I started the, the conversation, is that the informational meeting that didn't take place, I still believe that Commissioner Kelly has a point in saying, you know, we approved the budget last year for what it was. We need to have that informational meeting going forward for a fleet management policy, not just a fleet management policy, district wide, township wide, not just police, you know, because it's also Public Works and everyone else, administration, all the vehicles that are involved in, in South Whitehall Township. But again, I'd, I'd like to see that happen sooner than later, but I, I understand you're up against the deadline here. But on the other hand, I, I agree with Commissioner Kelly that the budget was put in for Tahos, I'm sorry, for the Explorers. And, and let's move on with that and then put a plan together so we know where we're going five, you know, one, two, three, five years down the road. That's, that's what I'd like to see happen.
Your discretion.
If there's no other board comment, I'll open up to the floor if there's any public comment at this time. Is there anyone online, Chris?
If anyone online would like to make a comment, you may unmute yourselves and say it now. No comment.
No comment, thank you.
I do have another comment, Chief. You made a comment earlier that, and I made, I made me to paraphrase, leasing is a problem with the cars that we have now? Or something that are, are we, as a township resident and as a board of commissioner member, are we're covering our calls, we're getting everything done on a timely basis with the cars we have? So we're not jeopardizing anybody's safety within the township.
Our SRO cars are.
Well, every time I go by the high school, they're sitting there.
Yeah.
I mean.
When they, when they start to go there, yes.
Well, they sit there.
Yeah. However, if there's a shooting at another school, they'll be leaving in that car.
I understand.
Try to go somewhere. One of them have to drive around with a jump pack in it to start the car on a regular basis. So there's, there's obvious issues. And we have a plan together to, if we get four cars now, whatever they are, we have a plan to switch over cars to try to solve some, some of those problems and actually decrease the number of cars in the fleet.
So, so to answer my, my question, we aren't in, in any way, shape or form jeopardizing any township resident, business, student in this township because of our vehicles?
That's a good question. It could have been today if, if Officer Webb had a hot call to go to and his car was acting up in the parking lot, then yes, maybe, but he'd have to jump into another car.
But he didn't.
He didn't.
Okay.
I mean, I would say that's really difficult to quantify because a brand new car can, can malfunction.
Absolutely it can.
So I mean, it's, you're, we're kind of playing like a prognostic.
Correct.
Yeah. It's very, very difficult to, to state, you know, it's possible.
But do we have enough vehicles in the fleet that we have a backup in case that happens? Do we have enough backup? Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to answer the question first, Chief?
We, we have cars, as long as there's not a special event going on, other functions going on, where there are officers that, we don't, at, at any point in time, we don't just have the officers working on a platoon working. We have special details out there, we have details at the schools, we have extra jobs that we perform for our businesses, the high holidays are coming up now, we typically have additional patrols out for that. We have vehicles, because we started this fleet management plan about four years ago when we went to the 12 hour shifts. We used to run cars 24/7. They would run around the clock, they would never get a break. They would last about three years and the maintenance costs would be elevated because they were constantly breaking down because they never got shut off. We went to the 12 hour shifts, we were able to, to make it where the cars run for 12 hours a day. Now we're getting five or six years out of them versus three. So those vehicles are in better shape toward the end that we can redeploy to something else. And that was part of the fleet management plan. We were so far behind that we can almost get to where we need to be if we continue to do the right thing. We're not there yet, but we're closer than we were.
Did you have a question?[1788.28]
Well, just a comment.
Give us your name for the record.
Yes, Chris Peichl. Personally, I don't care if he drives a Kia, right? When I call 911, I want a cop to arrive at my house and solve my problem. How he gets there, I don't care. It's like when you order pizza. What does the pizza guy drive? Nobody knows. All you want is your pizza delivered warm. He wants Tahos for his guys. Okay. If a cop, if an officer comes up and says, I hate these Tahos, they're stupid, see the chief, right? It's, it's within budget. Whether it's a Ford or a Tahoe, it doesn't matter. Like, that's what he needs to get the job done, in his opinion. He's within the budget. Herb said that the maintenance on the Fords is increasing, right? I, I don't see the, the issue that, if that's what he wants, I agree with you. We need a comprehensive plan. You can't come and say, well, we want four. And then do the budget and then say, well, we want five more, right? The, a plan for replacing vehicles isn't, we're going to drive them until they die and then replace them. That's not a plan. That's just a bunch of Band-Aids. So personally, I, if he wants Tahos, they're within budget. Drive Tahos. But when the budget time comes, you, the chief needs to have a plan. And, and Tom needs to have a plan going forward so that we, we can go ahead with. And next year, maybe Dodge comes out with this brand-new, super-duper vehicle that is better, stays within the budget. We're going to, we're going to need to charge Dodges next year. Knock your socks off as long as it's within the budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other further comment?
No, I'll just note that I, I did have a motion on the floor and I'll, I'll reiterate, especially after hearing what, what Mr. Peichl said. Considering that I believe it's our utmost responsibility to give our, all of our first responders the resources that they need. And considering the fact that we are within budget, I would make a motion to move forward with the purchase of the Ford Police Tahos.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. I would like to make a motion for one of the alternatives that was on our packet to approve two Tahos and two Fords with the option. This option gives the township the ability to evaluate the vehicles side-by-side in a real-life comparison to determine which vehicle serves the needs of our particular township best. I appreciate the information we've gotten from New York State. But very much would like to see us perform our own real-life, staff-controlled analysis of this moving forward, and I would certainly be in favor of that.
Second, with the understanding that we have an informal meeting by, before next year.
Motion is second on the floor. Further discussion?
No further discussion, but I agree with both of you. We need that, we need that study.
Well, that would be my next motion when I finish this. Okay. All right. So motion is second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A quick comment before I vote aye. Obviously, I made my, my point clear earlier about which option I'd prefer. But given that I, I will never oppose resources for first responders that have been budgeted for in the dollar amount, I would also vote aye.
Thank you for your vote. Motion carries four to zero. And I'm going to renew, let me see if I can bring my thoughts together. I'd like to make a motion to direct our township manager and staff to conduct a complete and comprehensive analysis of the entire inventory of vehicles and equipment in the township to provide for a five- and 10-year replacement plan, including objective criteria to develop a consistent policy across all township vehicle purchases, including branding, disposal of vehicles with a schedule and an overall fleet management plan. Is there a second to that motion?
Point of, point of clarification. I'm not sure we can vote on that motion. It's not on the agenda. And it's certainly more of a de minimis item.
It's more of a direction?
Yeah.
Providing direction. Are we all in agreement to provide direction to the township manager as described?
I was just going to say, I don't even know that you need a motion. My question to the board would be, when do you want me to have this done?
When practical. Clearly, we understand you're in the middle of preparing the budget for the board within the next month. And this is probably going to take some time and resources.
Do you want it in time for the budget, though? That's, that's the key question.
I think, I'll speak for myself, the board needs direction at budget time. We're talking about analyzing vehicles and moving forward with what makes sense for the township as a whole. So whatever you and staff bring to the board during budget, we will, you know, discuss at that time. But I don't want to put restrictions on you for time to do this all on a month.
I'm sorry. I appreciate that. And then we'll get as much as we can done between now and, and the budget cycle.
Very good. And just as a final comment for all and also to Chief, you've mentioned tonight about vehicles that have broken down and whatnot. I can tell you that, again, I was not aware that you have significant issues with vehicles that don't work. And if it is brought to this board that you have issues where you need to repair or, you know, bring it up to speed somehow outside of what we've approved in our budget, that's never been brought to our attention. And if there's a way for you to communicate that to us in the future, I believe that would be helpful. Moving on to Agenda Item 9A, Boards and Commissions, informational items and vacancies. If you'd present.
Yes. So upcoming meetings are listed as follows. Thursday, September 21st, tomorrow, 7:30 PM, Planning Commission. Monday, September 25th, 10 AM, Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Wednesday, September 27th, 7 PM, Zoning Hearing Board. Monday, October 2nd, 7 PM, Public Safety Commission. And Wednesday, October 4th, 7 PM, Board of Commissioners. All meeting details are posted on the township website. The current vacancies for boards and commissions are as follows. Civil Service Commission has one alternate vacancy. Actually, we just received notification, we'll have another vacancy as well for a primary member. Environmental Advisory Council, three vacancies. Green Advisory Council has two vacancies. Landscape Shade Tree Commission has one vacancy and Zoning Hearing Board has three alternate vacancies. At the last meeting, the board had directed township staff to schedule interviews for vacant positions. We've reviewed the citizen board policy. And we need to first advertise for all of the current open and vacant expired terms. So we will be doing that when setting a date to receive applications in October. And then we can move forward with the scheduling of the interviews. So we want to make sure we follow that policy to a T, since it was recently adopted earlier this year.
Excellent. Thank you. And just a follow-up to advertising for current vacancies. I know I've asked this question before and it's always a challenge to reach as many residents as we can to alert them to opportunity to serve on our boards. Is there anything, and I don't need to answer tonight, but is there a way that we could potentially think out of the box to notify more residents that there are opportunities to, to serve here in the township?
We'll try to get the message out as, as best as we can.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll try to think outside of the box. Chris Stroller is really good at that.
I know he is. Thank you.
I'll say that if there's ever any related projects that's, that are going on, for example, some of these board vacancies, there are current plans in place, there's events that are similar that are happening. We do try to advertise it at those times, just to expand the interest of the people who are either attending events or coming to meetings.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
I just have a couple of additional questions. Tom, when we advertise the vacancies, are we also advertising for, is it a general advertisement? Is it specific to vacancies and also for expired terms?
It's both.
It's both. And then will any outreach be done specifically to current Board or Commission members whose term is either expired or will expire, say, by the end of the year?
Yes.
Just that way they can express their interest, even if they return the form and say, you know, here's my name, qualifications, I'm already a member, just to give them that opportunity.
Yes. I believe the policy encourages or requires that. Yeah, I believe it does. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Agenda Item B, Budget Workshop Dates. Tom?
So we're going to advertise for the budget hearing or budget workshop to be October 26th at 5 o'clock PM here at the Township Building.
Thank you. Moving on to 10A, Landscapes Plan Final Meeting Date Change. Chris, we've got a change of date.
Yes. If you recall, we had a series of public meetings in August. We had our resource subject meetings on natural resources, agricultural resources and historic resources. We had tentatively scheduled October, let me just check my notes here, October, Tuesday, October 10th, for our final wrap-up meeting of this, where we would present the final strategies and mechanisms in a public setting. What we have been doing since the resource meetings is we've been compiling all of our notes. And we've actually had an opportunity, I know I've been in contact with, specifically on the historic side, the State Historic Preservation Office, staff in, in that office and the Lehigh County Historical Society. We're trying to make end roads with those organizations in order to help influence our strategies. We think that'd be a good, those would be good organizations to kind of bet our strategies before the public meeting. And also in between that time period is the Pennsylvania American Planning Association Conference, which there are a number of sessions on historic preservation and similar types of work that we're doing this plan. Some staff is attending that. And I know that we've gotten a lot of good information out of that conference in the past. So we felt it would be important to maybe have some of the information from that conference prior to the final wrap-up meeting. So we're really only looking to shift the date two weeks later in order for us to have those meetings with the organizations I've mentioned and to attend the conference prior to that.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you. Agenda Item 10B, South Whitehall Township Local Services Tax Collection Agreement. Notification of Termination Received From Parkland School District. And Tom, if you would present.
Thank you. So Parkland School District, the Board of Director has voted to close its tax collector, collection office effective December 31st, 2023. Accordingly, the township must decide who your collector will be going forward. So we've looked at both Burckheimer Tax Innovations as well as Keystone Collections Group. Both provided the same commission rate of 1.75%. So given the fact that Burckheimer collects your earned income tax through the Lehigh County Tax Collection Committee in Act 32, it makes more sense to utilize Burckheimer. So not asking for a motion, I would just like the board to basically indicate that you, you were amenable to that approach. And then I'll, I'll engage Burckheimer to come up with a final contract and have a resolution to have, to, for the board to consider approval at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, that information has been provided to us, both Burckheimer and the other applicant. Certainly in favor of your recommendation to move forward with Burckheimer as our collector.
Okay. I'll work on that. And then also I would respectfully request that the issue of the MOU be tabled due to the fact that the three municipalities, South Whitehall, North Whitehall and Upper McCongee, as well as the district, are still working through some, some particular aspects of an arrangement.
Very good. So to the matter of Burckheimer, is the board in agreement to give direction to Tom? And is the board in agreement, then I'll make a motion, oh, I don't need a motion to table. This was just direction discussion. Very good. Moving on to Agenda Item C, Recommendation to Terminate ClearGov Budgeting Platform Effective December 31st, 2023. And Tom, if you'd present.
Yes, I will. Thank you. So ClearGov is the online budgeting software platform that was used to prepare the 2023 adopted budget and will be also used to prepare the 2024 budget, which is currently in progress. Originally, the software was, was intended to accomplish the following, to integrate with existing software platforms, to provide transparency and clarity into the budgeting platform and to provide additional insight into the township's existing light items for all funds. The township has spent a total of $46,100 on this service for the years 2022 and 23. 2024, if you elect to go forward with ClearGov again, it would be another $26,000 and, and change. So we've discussed this, the executive department, finance department. And we don't feel that this budgeting software is necessary into accomplish those above-listed goals. As a matter of fact, we feel we would have more flexibility in accomplishing those goals by using a combination of our existing ERP system, Excel spreadsheets and, and Word documents, basically. Because it gives us more flexibility to provide information to you. The ClearGov platform is not flexible. It does not allow you to, to change it very easily. And we can still have the same line items that you've seen with ClearGov in the same format. And it won't cost you anything. Staff would respectfully request to, to proceed with that, with notifying ClearGov, we're not going to renew their contracts. You would save $26,000 in the 2024 budget.
I have no objection to that.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Tom. I do have a quick question. As long as we give them adequate notification, 60 days, we don't have to pay any kind of fine or penalty or anything like that, do we?
We do not. As long as we meet that and that's, letter is ready and ready to go out the door, it's the first thing tomorrow morning.
So you have what you need from us?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Very good. Agenda Item 11, we have nothing under old business. Agenda Item 12, courtesy of the floor, again, opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board with any comments or questions. Hearing and seeing none. Agenda Item 13, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. Motion is second on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. We have no executive session scheduled this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion is second on favor?
Aye.
Aye. This motion is adjourned. Thank you.